Ready to start, I believe. To Nathan White, a resident of the town of Raymond in the county of Cumberland in the state of Maine, greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Raymond, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet at the Jordan Small Middle School Gymnasium in said town on Wednesday, June 3, 2015, at 6:00 p.m., then and there to act on Articles 1 through 37 as set out below. The continuation of said meeting will be held at the Jordan Small Middle School Gymnasium in said town on Tuesday, the 9th day of June, A.D. 2015, at 7:00 in the forenoon, then and there to act upon it by secret ballot on Article 38 as set out below. The polling hours thereof to be from 7:00 in the forenoon until 8:00 in the evening. Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside at said meeting.
Make a motion for Charlie Craken.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Are there any further nominations?
Will that nomination cease?
Second.
Nominations have ceased. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I don't moderate often, can you tell? All in favor of nominations ceasing? Please raise your cards. Okay, if anyone would like to partake in the vote, if you can come down, I'll give you a ballot and a pencil.
How many people do it?
What do they do?
Voting for us. You only need two people to do it.
How many years have you guys been doing this?
Two or three.
So we've had three ballots cast, which is as many as we need for law, and we do have a majority for Charles Craken.
Thank you very much for that overwhelming showing of support. I surmise from the report of the clerk that I received two of the three votes. That'd be a majority, right? Yeah. I now have to take the oath. I, Charles Craken, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof, so help me God. I do swear that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as moderator for the town of Raymond, according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help me God. And I have to sign this before the town clerk. And my first official act will be to appoint Suzanne Carr deputy moderator, and Suzanne will have to come up and take the oath. Do you, Suzanne Carr, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof, so help you God?
I do.
And do you swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as deputy moderator for the town of Raymond, according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help you God?
I do.
Sue is doing yeoman work because without a deputy moderator, I would be required to be at the polling place at 7:00 a.m. on June 9. And I have two golden retrievers who would not permit me to do that. Now, by tradition, it's my understanding that before the business of the town meeting is conducted, that if you're able, you stand, we face the flag, and we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business, I feel like a flight attendant, but if you have a mobile phone, would you either shut it off or place it in the airplane mode at this time? I would also ask for unanimous consent from the body to permit non-voters to speak. Is there any objection? Hearing none? It is so ordered. Now, as to the way we propose to run the meeting, I will read an article, and when I have read the article, and it is all printed in your annual budget and town warrant, and I'll tell you the page which you can find the specific article at, once I have done that, that brings the article to the floor, and I will ask for a motion to adopt the article in a second. At that point, the article will then be available for discussion, for amendment, things of that nature. If you want to participate in the discussion, please come to the microphone here, I will recognize you. Two very basic rules: brevity is very good; excursions away from the subject under discussion are very bad. So if we can kind of remember good on brevity, bad on excursions, we're going to do fine. We have our Board of Selectmen and our Budget and Finance Committee folks here. If you have any specific question for them, please direct it through me, and we will handle it that way. And at the end of this meeting, when we adjourn, we will not adjourn finally, we will merely adjourn to 7:00 a.m. on June 9, which is the election part of this process. So let's start with Article 2, on page 3, I believe, of the book. Shall 4.2 Plans of the Raymond Street Ordinance as adopted May 18, 2002, and amended through June 4, 2013, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strike-over type as shown below? The Planning Board recommends Article 2; the Selectmen recommend Article 2. Make a motion to adopt Article 2?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 2. Is there any discussion? Well, ma'am, I'd be happy to read the description, which is contained on page 3.
Can anybody just say briefly why we're doing it?
It's, I'm happy to read you the description. It's on page 3 of this book, which I assume, if you don't have it, you'd be happy to get it.
I've read every word of it, and I still don't understand why we're doing it. I thought somebody could get up and explain it. I used to be a member of the Planning Board years ago, and it was really important to know why we're doing something.
Mr. Hanson is right behind you. I think he probably has some expertise in this area. Chris?
Yeah, Chris Hanson, 5 Crockett Road, also the code enforcement officer for the town of Raymond. The reason we're doing, adding the language, we've had in the past private roads that have been built with stormwater facilities, level-up spreaders, retention ponds, and nowhere in the Planning Board documents are any requirements to maintain those facilities. By having a note on the plan that's notarized and have them documented and recorded, the registry deed, will give the town a better opportunity to make sure that these facilities are maintained. That's the main gist of why we're incorporating this language. It's to help us maintain the private streets so that we don't have phosphorus runoff into the lakes or wetlands or cause any other erosion problems in town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of Article 2? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Article 2 will raise their voting cards. Thank you, those opposed. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3. Shall Articles 10b, Authority and Classification of Site Plans, and 10d, Submission Requirements of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 3, 2014, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strike-over type as shown below? The Planning Board recommends Article 3; the Selectmen recommend Article 3. It appears on page 4 of your warrant. Is there a motion to accept Article 3?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded that we accept Article 3. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate. Those opposed? Article 3 is adopted. Article 4 appears on page 6. Article 4. Shall Articles 9, Minimum Standards, and 12, Definitions of the Raymond Land Use Ordinance as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 3, 2014, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strike-over type as shown below? The Planning Board recommends Article 4; the Selectmen recommend Article 4. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 4. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting Article 4? Those opposed? Article 4 is adopted. Article 5 appears on page 8. Article 5. Shall Section 14, Table of Uses, and Section 17, Definitions, as adopted May 21, 1994, and amended through June 3, 2014, be further amended by adding the underscored language and deleting the language in strike-over type as shown below? The Planning Board recommends Article 5; the Selectmen recommend Article 5. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 5. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article 5? Those opposed? Article 5 is adopted. Article 6 is on page 9. Article 6. To see if the town will vote pursuant to 23, Main Revised Statutes annotated, Section 2953, that orders of the municipal officers with respect to the closing of roads to winter maintenance shall be a final determination. The Selectmen recommend Article 6. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 6. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article 6? Those opposed? Article 6 is adopted. Article 8 appears on page 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen, on behalf of the town, to sell and dispose of any property acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes pursuant to the policy adopted by the Selectmen, as may be amended from time to time. The policy to remain consistent with state statutes and laws. In all cases, conveyance to be made by municipal quitclaim deed. The Selectmen recommend Article 8; the Budget Committee recommends Article 8. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 8. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Doug Kerr, 10 Evergreen Terrace. The selling of property, the monies that are received from that, where does the money go to?
Is it a general fund, Joe, or is there a specific fund?
The undesignated fund balance on the revenue.
Did you get that, Mr. Kerr?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting Article 8? Those opposed? Article 8 is adopted. Article 9 appears on page 10. Article 9. To see what date taxes will be due and to set an interest rate for unpaid amounts. The Selectmen recommend first half to be due October 31, 2015, and second half to be due April 30, 2016, with interest at 7% on any unpaid balances. The Selectmen recommend Article 9; the Budget Committee recommends Article 9. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 9. Is there discussion? Just wanted to know what the route of travel was going to be there, sir. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article 9? Those opposed? Article 9 is adopted. Article 10 is on page 10. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at 7% for the fiscal year. The Selectmen recommend Article 10; the Budget Committee recommends Article 10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 10. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 10? Those opposed? Article 10 is adopted. Article 11, page 10. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value not to exceed $35,000. The Selectmen recommend Article 11; the Budget Committee recommends Article 11. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 11. Is there discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Carissa Kerr, 10 Evergreen Terrace. Do you have an example of what this personal property might be that's currently owned by the town?
Question, is an example of the personal property that might be owned by the town?
Capital asset, you know, a fire truck, an old, you know, vehicle of some kind, probably, more likely than not. We don't typically approach $35,000.
Great, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 11? Those opposed? Article 11 is adopted. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to borrow from or appropriate from undesignated fund balance surplus as they deem advisable to meet the unanticipated needs of the community that occur during the fiscal year with amount not to exceed $75,000. The Selectmen recommend Article 12; the Budget Committee recommends Article 12. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Article 12. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article 12? Those opposed? Article 12 is adopted. Article 13. To see if the town will authorize the Selectmen for the fiscal year 2015-2016 to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grand total of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only at a properly called public meeting of the Selectmen. The Selectmen recommend Article 13; the Budget Committee recommends Article 13. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 13. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 13? Those opposed? Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to authorize the use of town employees and/or town-owned equipment or independent contractor/contractors hired by the town for maintenance on private roads in special and certain circumstances wherein the public's interest. Note of explanation: three examples of when the use of town employees and equipment may be necessary. A, tying in work done on a public road that intersects a private road. B, plowing snow on a private road to clear the way for emergency response apparatus. And C, in rare or emergency situations, maintaining private roads for school bus access to special education students as deemed necessary. The Selectmen recommend Article 14; the Budget Committee recommends Article 14. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 14. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 14? Those opposed? Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, which runs to page 11. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36, Main Revised Statutes annotated, Section 506. The Selectmen recommend Article 15; the Budget Committee recommends Article 15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 15. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 15? Those opposed? Article 15 is adopted. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $225,376 from the tax increment of the Pipe Line/RT302 Tax Increment Financing District, I assume RT is root, for fiscal year 2015-2016 projects proposed in the Tax Increment Financing District Development Program. Note: Included in this item are Raymond Casco Historical Society, $1,800; RWPA Mill Foil Program, $17,500; and GPCOG Annual Dues, $4,436. The Selectmen recommend Article 16. The Budget Committee recommends adding $970 for the Main Volunteer Lake Monitoring Program to Article 16 for a total of $226,346. Is there a motion?
Move the Selectmen recommendation?
Second.
The Selectmen recommendation of Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Ma'am, you'll have to come forward, I'm sorry. Since we have a portable microphone, it can go to you.
Volunteer Lake Monitoring sounds like a good idea. Could somebody speak for that?
Lake Monitoring is indeed a good idea. This is a new program, and so I think the question was really whether there was an adequate amount of information, and there was some difficulty of the sponsor in coming to make presentations, and so I don't want to speak for the Board of Selectmen, Budget Finance Committee, but I believe the Budget Finance Committee wanted to give some level of funding to, as a demonstration of good faith. I think the Selectmen would say that probably there wasn't enough information to judge the program, and that maybe it should come back another year with, you know, an actual presentation. There wasn't really a presentation for the Board of Selectmen on it.
Well, since it came from the Budget Committee, could somebody on the Budget Committee tell us why it would be a good idea?
Some of it came down to a timing issue on why there was the difference in recommendations. The presentation, as was said, didn't get given to the Select Board. It did get given to us in our final deliberation evening, so we added that. But what this does is it parlay's also some other funds that are available to help in the overall monitoring. So the Budget Committee looked at that as an addition to what the RWPA is doing to help in some of the mill foil mitigation and trying to get some other state funding and things like that in. So we looked at that as a small amount to help parlay some larger amounts coming in as well and some larger grants. We did get, you know, when we were able to get them to come in and speak with us, you know, and found out some of the areas that were going to be, where the funds were going to be used and worked at, it is in the Raymond area, so we thought it was valuable to add that as well.
Well, I think this is one of our biggest resources in this town, so I certainly support what the Budget Committee supports.
I'm going to infer from that, ma'am, that you are making a motion to amend the motion that's currently on the floor by adding the $970 and increasing the total expenditure of the article to $226,346. I'll assume your motion, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to amend Article 16 as recommended by the Selectmen. Is there further discussion before we vote on the amendment? All right, hearing none. We're now voting to amend Article 16 by adding an additional $970 for the Main Volunteer Lake Monitoring Program to Article 16 for a total of $226,346. All in favor? Thank you, opposed? The amendment to Article 16 is adopted. And now, hearing no further discussion on the main motion, all in favor of the adoption of Article 16 as amended? All right? And opposed? Article 16 as amended is adopted. Article 17, still on page 11. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $548,374 for the administration account. The Selectmen recommend Article 17; the Budget Committee recommends Article 17. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 17. Is there discussion? Hearing, okay. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article 17? Thank you, those opposed? Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $52,379 for the assessing account. The Selectmen recommend Article 18; the Budget Committee recommends Article 18. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Article 18. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 18? Thank you, those opposed? Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $18,885 for the Town Hall Account. The Selectmen recommend Article 19; the Budget Committee recommends Article 19. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt Article 19. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 19? Thank you, those opposed? Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $490,187 for the insurance account. The Selectmen recommend Article 20; the Budget Committee recommends Article 20. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Article 20. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Article 20? Thank you, those opposed? Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $6,000 for the General Assistance Account. The Selectmen recommend Article 21; the Budget Committee recommends Article 21. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 21. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 21? Thank you, those opposed? Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $184,271 for the Technology Department Account. The Selectmen recommend Article 22; the Budget Committee recommends Article 22. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 22. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 22? Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Article 22 is adopted. We're on page 12 of your warrant booklet. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $51,651 for the Community Development Account. The selectmen recommend Article 23, the Budget Committee recommends Article 23. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Has it been moved and seconded?
Second.
All right. Article 23 has been moved and seconded. It's now before the body? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sorry if I interrupted, Mr. Moderator. Peter Dunn, 84 Whitemore Cove Road. I would like to propose a motion to amend this article and revise the recommended appropriation of $51,651 for the Community Development Account and reduce it by $5,000, reducing it to $46,651.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that Article 23 be amended to deduct $5,000 from the proposed appropriation of $51,651, resulting in a balance of $46,651. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, may I explain my...
Please.
The $5,000 that I recommended be removed was a recommended appropriation for the Lake Region Bus Service. That is, the local bus that travels from Portland through Wyndham, Raymond, Casco to Naples. It currently is losing money hand over fist. There was substantial discussion and debate at the Budget Finance Committee. However, I think the Budget Finance Committee was somewhat inclined to not appropriate money for that bus service. However, the selectmen decided to put in $5,000 for a one-year trial to see if they could increase the ridership. The ridership is minimal at best. A recent article in the Lake Region paper explained that. To the best of our knowledge, our committee in trying to find out what the ridership was from Raymond on the bus was an average at most of two people. To me, $5,000 is too much to transport two people from Raymond to Portland each year. If the bus service continues, there was evidence prepared, provided in data from the Regional Transportation Program, which would indicate that it would not be long in the near term when the cost would rise from $5,000 to $20,000 a year, and who knows where it would go from there. Therein lies my reason for requesting that the $5,000 appropriation for the Lake Region Bus Service be removed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on the amendment?
I think this is important. No public transportation makes its own way, including airlines, including driving on the roads. We all are subsidized. This is a way of subsidizing to help people throughout the community. This affects Bridgeton, Naples, Raymond, Wyndham, Westbrook. We're part of a team. We're part of what needs to be done. I think this is not something that should be eliminated. I think it's something that should be supported.
Yes, sir.
Mike Reynolds, Kilt Drive in Raymond. Just to follow up, the original request from the Lake Region Bus was approximately $10,000, just a few dollars short of that. So during budget deliberations, this was lowered to $5,000 to try to get into a range that the Select Board was looking for. I personally do not support the Lake Region Bus, really due to the fact that they went out, they got a grant. More importantly, it is run by RTP, which is not a fixed route bus service provider. The only reason that they are providing this service right now is because they got a grant, and that grant helps them support a staff member for other things. And although I agree that it does benefit our communities somewhat, when this grant goes away, the bus is going away, or we're going to look at a bill probably in excess of $30,000 to $40,000 per year. So, just a little more background on how this has come about and what I've learned behind the scenes and not just the nice presentation they made to us. So, thank you.
All right. Further discussion on the amendment?
Louise Lester, 10 Hartley Lane. I had not heard that, so my feelings changed a little with that information. But I will say it's a fledgling endeavor, and $5,000, I think, and it's an investment in something that may do good in the future, might be a good thing to do for one more year and give it a chance.
Just for a point of clarification, is the moderator correct in understanding that currently there is $10,000 in the Wyndham budget, or it was $10,000 and you reduced it to $5,000? Okay. So, with this deletion of $5,000, that is a zero appropriation for that program?
No appropriation. I think the correct number that was requested, and then it was amended by John Rand, who was the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Now, why he amended that, I don't know, but he brought us $5,000, so that's what we considered. The selectmen considered, the Budget Finance Committee considered, but the number that's in the budget in all the other towns is $96.50.
Feel free. I'm recognizing you, sir.
Thank you. Robert Goslin, 11 Eagles View Drive. Just for a point of clarification, originally, funding for the Lake Region Bus came under this article, Community Development and Services, and I've got notes where it's actually been moved to the TIF. Is it sitting in TIF, or is it actually in this account for funding?
Just to respond to that, it was originally in the TIF, but then it was looked at by Kurt Lebel, and he said it was an inappropriate use of it in the TIF. So that's why it got put into Community Development.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brad McCurtin. I live at 33 Main's Farm Road here in our town of Raymond. I've been a resident here for almost 30 years. I can appreciate that maybe some of you haven't had the opportunity to ride the Lake Region Bus. How many have? Can I ask you, how many of you drive into Portland?
Excuse me, Mr. McCurtin, but you're not conducting a plebiscite. You're making a comment with respect to the town.
Okay, I'll make the comment under those rules. I can live with that. Let me say that I was the co-chair of the comprehensive plan for our committee the last time that was done. One of the suggestions that that plan did, that we voted on as a community, was to incentivize some mass transportation to help people get into Portland. There are a lot of people who do not have transportation. You may have transportation today, you may not have it when you need it. I have three vehicles. I don't need a bus to drive into Portland, have the funds to be able to do that. I've logged over 400,000 miles on Route 302 over my lifetime. I don't need a bus. But the day that bus service became effective, which was the day after Thanksgiving of 2013, I rode the bus. I was the only person who rode that bus in, other than the RTP driver and an RTP person. I made a commitment that I wanted to support this bus because this community needs it. There are people who don't have vehicles, there are people who have lost their licenses and other things. I now ride that bus four to five times a week. The reason the bus isn't filled up isn't because of the bus company, it's because of us. You look at that traffic, Route 302 is one of the highest traveled routes in the state of Maine. You look at the number of vehicles that are there, you look at the fuel that's being burned. We have an opportunity to cut down on the transportation over the road costs, we have the opportunity to reduce emissions. Someone mentioned there are only two people from Raymond who ride that. It's not exactly correct information. There are more than that who ride the bus. I frequently pick it up in Wyndham, and I show up in the Wyndham account. I can tell you that today I rode on that bus. That bus was as full as I've ever seen it. People were doubling up in seats because there wasn't enough room on the bus. $5,000, which is the least of any community here that's being asked to contribute to it, works out to about a dollar a person for a $3 ride. And if you buy the 10-day pass, it's $2.50; if you buy the month pass like I do, it's $50. $1 a person in this room is a very small price if you ever need to get into Portland to visit a loved one in the hospital, to get cancer treatment out at Scarborough where you can get a free transfer to get out and back, or for other reasons you want to send your children in or something on a responsible place. $1 per resident of this community. Will it go up from there? Possibly. Who knows? But this company, RTP, has been one of the most successful in getting grant money of anyone around. If they need more money, I'll bet they can get that through a grant. So I would urge you to support. I understand your amendment, I understand your comments, sir, but I also am probably the person who has ridden the bus more than, I'm not, no probably, but I have ridden it more than anybody else. So with that, I would ask you to think about this. Thank you for giving me so much time here, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any further discussion? We're discussing the amendment. Hearing no further discussion, will vote on the amendment to Article 23, which proposes to delete $5,000 from the appropriation of $51,651, leaving an appropriation of $46,651. Voting yes will support the deletion, voting in opposition will oppose the deletion. All in favor of adopting the amendment will indicate by an "I" vote. Thank you. Those opposed to the adoption of the amendment? The amendment fails. We now will vote on the main article. Article 23, which has been moved and seconded to appropriate $51,651 for the Community Development Account. Is there other discussion on the main article?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Richards from 82 Rosewood Drive. Just a question. I'm new. When I look at the previous years, could you give me a little background about what does this Director of Development do for $3,000, and why was that put in there? Obviously, there's some background there. Any comments? I'm not necessarily a post, I'd just like to know what it is.
Right. So the town has a private nonprofit committee, the Raymond Revitalization Committee, and they are looking at ways to strengthen the town's economic development efforts, make recommendations. They're not an affiliated town committee, if you will, but a group of interested citizens, business people, people who want to see Raymond thrive and prosper. And so, that group is the, I think, the genesis of the idea that we ought to be doing something proactive to help, to foster and grow the business community, to look at ways to improve the general economic climate. So we have a staff person who's been tasked with doing that, and that person had done that task for a little better than a year perhaps, and has made some significant, I think, inroads in that area. We've been very pleased with her performance. We've acquired some grant funds. We're presently studying the possibility with planning decisions of strategies that might benefit the town moving forward to actually identify opportunities and find ways that, you know, we could help our business community to thrive and prosper. As you may be aware, we have some vacant buildings, which we don't like to see. Some people say, well, you know, Raymond's kind of a drive-through town, you know, there's no economic development strategy that's going to work here. You know, we, the Revitalization Committee doesn't buy that notion, the town doesn't buy that notion. We want to do something. So this is a small something, a baby step into how can we make Raymond a more active place from a business standpoint? We think that contributes to the overall quality of life, and if Raymond's not an attractive place that draws people in, it will be a dying place, and we don't want that. So this is a baby step in the direction of what can we do to improve the town business
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 23? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 23 is adopted. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $666,477 for the Fire Rescue Department Account. The selectmen recommend Article 24, the Budget Committee recommends Article 24. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 24. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 24? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 24 is adopted. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $16,222 for the Animal Control Account. The selectmen recommend Article 25, the Budget Committee recommends Article 25. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 25. Is there discussion? I don't think that's discussion. I just think that's a radio communication. Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 25? Opposed? Article 25 is adopted. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $21,816 for the Infrastructure Account. The selectmen recommend Article 26, the Budget Committee recommends Article 26. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 26. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 26? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 26 is adopted. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $687,418 for the Public Works Account. The selectmen recommend Article 27, the Budget Committee recommends Article 27. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 27. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 27? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 27 is adopted. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $314,742 for the Solid Waste Account. The selectmen recommend Article 28, the Budget Committee recommends Article 28. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 28. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 28? Opposed? Article 28 is adopted. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,048 for the Cemetery's Account. The selectmen recommend Article 29, which incidentally is on page 12. The Budget Committee recommends Article 29. Is there discussion?
Some moved.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. You have to stir up a little debate to keep the moderator on his toes here. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 29. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 29? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 29 is adopted. Article 30 is on page 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $14,338 for the Parks and Recreation Account. Included are materials, maintenance, and equipment of $2,500, contract services $8,038, Raymond Rattler's snowmobile $800, Raymond baseball/softball $1,000, and Agawam mowing soccer $2,000. The selectmen recommend Article 30, the Budget Committee recommends Article 30. Is there a motion?
Moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 29. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 30. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 30? Thank you, those opposed? Article 30 is adopted. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars for the Raymond Village Library. The selectmen recommend Article 31. The budget committee recommends decreasing to fifty-four thousand dollars for Article 31. Is there a motion?
Recommendation?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the selectmen's recommendation of appropriating fifty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars. Is there discussion?
My name's Elisa Gifford, 546 Webb's Mills Road. I am a trustee for the Raymond Village Library. And on behalf of the trustees and staff, I'd like to discuss some of the most important things that have happened over the past year. Thanks to a, um, public forum held at the library, of which many of you attended, we now have a strategic plan that's in place and being implemented. We have a brand-new website, raymondvillagelibrary.org, that is extremely user-friendly. It's packed with all kinds of valuable information and links. In the month of May alone, we had over two thousand hits on our website. We have a Facebook page, which is, um, visited by more people than any other library webpage, I'm sorry, Facebook page in the Lakes region. Thanks to the technology depart- department in Raymond, we have successfully transitioned to our own tech support person. And also due to the generosity of Kevin Woodbury, we have a dedicated computer that he has donated to the library, which we will use for our CRM, which is a customer relations management website, database, I'm sorry, which we will be using for our annual appeal and all the other fundraising we will be doing during the year. We're looking forward to another very active year. We are also seeking those who might be interested in joining us on our Board of Trustees. So anyone who's interested, please call the library, six-five-five, four-two-eight-three, or come to the library and talk to Sally Holt. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
The moderator is going to infer that you're speaking in support of the motion that is pending.
I am definitely speaking in support, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sheila Burke, 63 Hancock Road. I'm a new resident here in Raymond, and I'd like to speak and be, uh, in support of this article. The library to me is a community center, a community hub that's vital for the sharing of information and supportive members of our community. I've been enthralled with the Raymond Public Library since I was from away for a few years. And it's been instrumental, the entire library system here, um, in, in my life as a person. It gave me the opportunity to, um, learn, to grow, and eventually to make a decision to, to move on to things like college and, and things like that. So I'm just really pleased to see this increase in this article, and I would like to, again, offer my support of it.
Peter Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. Mr. Moderator, just a point of information as far as from the, uh, Budget Committee as to why, uh, you proposed a different, uh, budget line.
The library generated a lot of, a lot of discussion in both the, both the selectmen and the Budget Committee hearings. From a perspective standpoint, the, the amount funded to the library in the past has been, it, it's, it's been on an increasing scale, but last year was at forty thousand dollars. So even at the recommend, at, at the Budget Committee's recommendation of the 54, that still represented a fourteen thousand dollar increase over the prior year's, uh, support. Uh, you know, there's, there's, there is good support on, on both boards of the library, and I think you find that most everyone on the Select Board, as well as on the Budget Committee, donates to the, to the libraries too. It was, really came down to a function of how much of an increase was being asked for versus was that reasonable across what other, what increases have been given to other areas and things like that. Uh, the, the figure of 54 was kind of a compromise. Some people wanted to, someone on the committee wanted to go a little bit lower, some wanted to go a little bit higher and settle to 54,000. But it really came down to looking at how much has been given in the past, and that was quite a dramatic increase, especially from the standpoint that they hadn't met their fundraising goals in the last year. And we, we'd asked for some details on what they were doing to try and get that and, and get that up to the level that they were looking for. And they've got some good plans, but we wanted to see how those, how those went in place before they went and committed a lot more money towards things that they weren't going to be able to support in the future, and then just ask for more and more money each year. So, uh, it really is why there was a difference between what the Budget Committee recommended and what the Select Board recommended.
If you want the mic, you, you come to it. I'm not taking it to you.
Peter Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. So as, as I calculated, and hopefully my math is correct, uh, the Select Board's, uh, recommendation would be a 37.5% increase over 2014. Is, is that pretty accurate?
For the folks who have just joined us, we're discussing Article 31, which is on page 13 of your booklet. And, uh, there is a motion pending to appropriate fifty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars for the Raymond Village Library. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Article 31 as recommended by the selectmen. Thank you, those opposed? Article 31 is adopted. Actually, probably would have gone onto the hammer if I'd have done it right out of the gate. Article 32, to see whether the town will vote to carry forward any existing fund balance in the capital improvement program account. The selectmen recommend Article 32. The budget committee recommends Article 32. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 32. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 32? Thank you, those opposed? Article 32 is adopted. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars for the capital improvement account. Included are Public Works Equipment Reserve, eighty-five thousand dollars, 2013 Public Works Road Construction Bond Payment, two-hundred-and-forty thousand, Public Works Paving Road Reserve, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, Municipal Facilities Maintenance and Improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars, 2002 PSB Bond Payment, one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, Fire Department Equipment and Facilities, seventy-five thousand dollars, Bond Payment for Fire Truck, Sand, and Salt Shed, one-hundred-and-five thousand dollars, Technology Equipment Upgrades Broadcast Studio, forty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, and Patricia Avenue Recreational Facility, IRT, twenty-five thousand dollars. The selectmen recommend Article 33. The budget committee recommends Article 33. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 33. Discussion?
Louise Lester, 10 Hartley Lane. Could somebody here please explain the Patricia Avenue Recreation Facility, IRT, amount of twenty-five thousand? What it's going to be for and what it is leading to?
It's for a wetland study to see if the property were suitable for development as a potential recreational site. And following on that, the second piece of due diligence, we're doing it a step at a time, would be a traffic study to see what sort of impacts there would be if it were to be developed into a recreational site for traffic exiting, entering Patricia Avenue from the 302 corridor, which of course is very congested and busy, uh, travelway. So that, so those are the first two steps. What it would be leading to, if, if we got an affirmative on both of those, and then the policy folks, uh, charged with making the decision wanted to move forward, it would be leading to, uh, further study, engineering, budget development, and then assuming it continued down along the line, it would lead to a possible vote as to whether we wanted to use the United States military to help us to develop the property into a recreational facility with basically half or better of the cost, that being the, uh, the labor and, uh, and equipment coming from the military, and the town would need to buy, uh, the materials and, and pay for the technical and engineering aspects of it. So that's the idea. Previously, we had looked at the Egypt Road property, and that was found to be a wetland and a substantially constrained wetland, so it was not suitable for development as a recreational field. It's probably going to stay about like it is right now, a woodland area, open space area. Uh, I do know that the Patricia Avenue Facility, or Patricia Avenue Site, has passed the first hurdle. It does not have any significant wetland areas. So now, after town meeting, we look at the traffic issue.
Shar Jewel, 17 Hartley Lane. Question, why are we looking at a secondary recreational area when we already have one on Mill Street? I know the land behind our current recreational facility is for sale. Wouldn't it make, make more sense to invest in a property that we already have, that's already partially with baseball fields and a playground? Um, if anybody hasn't been to the end of Patricia Avenue, it's not a place that I would recommend as a recreational facility. The infrastructure for the road, um, to make it passable for a lot of traffic, the hill itself would take dramatic changes to make that into playing fields and things like that. I don't think it's a good use of the town's funds. Thank you.
Yes, um, we have looked extensively at Mill Street, the Sherry Gagnon Park.
There are a couple of issues there. It's, uh, constrained by wetlands. The land that is behind it is, is wetter still than the land that the park was built on to begin with. Uh, if you were to go about building that park today, you'd probably be barred from doing so for environmental reasons. The only solution would be to, to build the park up, to lift it up, which would require a significant amount of, um, common borrow, and then you'd have to drain it somewhere. So you'd be draining it from a swamp to a swamp, basically, and so there really isn't any way to do that. We, we feel that would be a, a bad investment of the town's funds. Um, so that's not a facility that we, we think we should, uh, invest in. If you've ever played ball there, had children play ball there, you know that it's, uh, underwater a good part of the time. And, uh, so that's why, uh, not, not Mill Street. As for the overall, um, offerings of the town with respect to recreational fields, we are, are lucky in a sense because we've been able to count on the Camp Hines Boy Scouts of America to use their field, which is now out of place, so to speak, with the military encampment, and it now has a major septic system under it. It's probably not going to come back as a field. We, we may be able to get access to some of their new facilities, but the town basically has that little Sherry Gagnon Park. The Camp Agawam complex is privately owned, and, uh, so we're able to use that through a, uh, a partnership, public-private partnership. But if we were to lose that, um, we really would be in trouble. We'd be left just with Sherry Gagnon Park and it, and, uh, and the school grounds, of course. But the school grounds are predominantly, naturally, for the school, so we have to get in line, the recreation programs get in line behind the school, and, and then get, you know, some level of, uh, use, once the school uses are satisfied. So the idea is the town ought to have, among advocates, the idea is at least, the town ought to have a comprehensive recreational facility that would be town-owned and sufficient to meet the present and future recreational needs of the community. So we're trying to do that, if possible, on already-owned town land. Patricia Avenue.
Peter Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. Can someone, uh, explain to me as far as the demographics? I was on the impression that the school-age population in the town of Raymond is decreasing. And also, do we, uh, know if getting in line, uh, using Yaroslav U Fields has been prohibitive as far as requests from, uh, non-school, uh, functions?
Tom?
Uh, as far as the, I understand from the recreational people that it is difficult to get the uses that they need. Not impossible, but, but to get the dates they want is, uh, is working, working around the school. So, so that's been a very good and, and workable partnership. Um, but even looking at what the school has compared to many communities our size, it's, it's not a very, um, I guess, uh, overwhelming, uh, group of assets in some total. So the issue of demographics, it's true, the town is, um, from year to year, at least in the past few years, we're having fewer and fewer children. But this comes back to, you know, the whole chicken and egg idea. You know, are people coming to Raymond, you know, or not coming to Raymond perhaps at some level because we, we don't have community offerings? There is a school of thought that, that that could be a, a factor in why young people, and I talk to young people all the time at the town office, we have young people who work for us. You know, I hear that other communities offer more, they have, uh, they have better facilities, more facilities, more programming. I think overall that makes the town at some level a more attractive, you know, place to be. Maybe it's a self-fulfilling prophecy, maybe we're destined to have just empty-nest older people who don't want recreational facilities. But I talk to older people too, and a lot of older people say they like to walk, they like to enjoy, you know, active recreational opportunities. So I think that, this is me now, but I think that the community is best served by having, um, an, an active and, uh, you know, vibrant community and, and making offerings that might attract people here, and part of it is having a recreational facility. Uh, we really don't have a comprehensive recreational facility. Um, and so I, I think that if you look around you, most, most other towns, I would say every other town, I dare say that, has, has such a facility. It's an investment in the community's future. The town may not always be declining in, in young people. Let's hope we don't go on that path. Let's hope we do attract new families and, and new people to the town.
We're on the, the main article and the motion. Is there further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Carissa Kerr, 10 Evergreen Terrace. Is it possible to remove the 25,000 and vote on the rest of the CIP?
Uh, I could infer that you were making a motion to delete the Patricia Avenue Recreational Facility item of 25,000 from this article?
Correct.
All right, that's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we amend Article 33 by deleting the Patricia Avenue Recreational Facility line item of 25,000 dollars. Is there further discussion? Hearing, hearing none.
Frank McDermott, 10 McDermott Road in Raymond. Just a comment and an observation. Raymond has one of the lowest tax rates in Southern Maine. I get the feeling that the people who are up here in front of us would love to get that tax rate to zero. It showed today in some of the motions that have been made. We don't want undesirables living here, so we won't bust them. We probably could cut, uh, general assistance to 500 dollars. We don't need recreation. We don't need kids. We just need to kind of pull ourselves in and pull the blanket over the town. I'm just ashamed of the direction this town is going in. There was a time when Raymond was progressive, and I don't mean democratic by that, but they were moving forward. This town has not moved forward in almost 10 years, and it's a shame. This is another example of it. A town without recreation facilities is not going to attract new people. What happens when you don't attract new people? Property values get down. And that's what we're doing. We're turning our property values in a negative direction because of things like this.
You are opposed to the amendment, Mr. McDermott.
I am opposed to the amendment.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Bruno.
I think it's important to realize that this 25,000 dollars doesn't lead to a new recreational facility. This is a study to figure out what is viable with the land on Patricia Avenue. We own lots of acreage up there as a town. We need to know what we can do with it. You know, I'm not saying that I will support a 1.8 million dollar investment to build all new facilities up there, but as a selectman, I would like... facilities up there, but as a selectman, I would like to know what is possible with that land. What can it give me? We own an asset, let's know what we can do with that asset. For $25,000, I'll know about traffic, I found out about Vernal Pool and wetlands. This is a long way from building a recreational facility. That question's down the road. That's another year away. But I just want to know, what do I have? And I think it's important to know what you have and what you can do with it. So I will be opposed to the amendment.
Shar Jewell, 17 Hartley Lane. I just want to say that I am in support of the amendment of not spending $25,000 on this piece of property. I spend a lot of time up there. I've been up there a lot. It's very, very limited use regardless of whether or not it has wetlands. The road up to the top of that hill is narrow, it's steep. I'm sure the residents would not be happy with increased traffic on that road. So thank you for your time.
Is there further discussion on the proposed amendment to Article 33? Come on down, Mr. McCurtin.
Brad McCurtin from 33 Mainz Farm Road here in Raymond. And primarily, I just want to rebut the comment that was made here about this town not going anywhere in 10 years. I think this town has gone a long way positive in the past 10 years, and I'm sorry, anybody living here doesn't feel that way. I think the tax rate is admirable.
Mr. McCurtin, I gave him some latitude on his excursion, but you're flat-out telling me you're on an excursion and you're out of order.
Okay, so the other thing I would like to say, I think somewhere along the line, we said something about not attracting young people. I think it's interesting that the two people who sponsored this amendment are both among the youngest people here.
So you're supporting this amendment?
Pardon me?
All right, is there any further discussion? We're about to vote on the amendment to Article 33, which would delete the $25,000 line item for a study of the Patricia Avenue recreational facility from the article. Any further discussion? All right.
Would it be possible to change maybe the wording? Because if we're looking to see what we're using the land for with the $25,000, to see what we can do with it, because like Joe says, down the road, we're going to end up, we don't know if we're going to be building a complex or a field or whatever, but maybe if we had something else worded there that make people more comfortable as to say, you know, exploration of open land that we have for use, I don't know if we can do that. So it's not leading towards the baseball field or the complex or whatever, and I don't know if I'm in favor either way, but what happens is, that's a lot of work that we have to do later on, and I don't know, maybe...
Well, you can probably do it a couple of ways. The $25,000 has been given public notice, so it is a line item in the budget. The question would be whether you are permitted to re-characterize that line item through an amendment at a town meeting, assuming that the proposed motion to amend prevails. That will take that $25,000 out of this article. The question would then be the reinsertion of the $25,000 by a clarification of what was meant by Patricia Avenue recreational facility, which it sounds to me was a study of the possible uses of that real estate, which is an asset of the town. So you could probably develop that. It's a fetch, though, you know? I mean, that's the reason why we have a budget and a warrant, and we send it out so people know what it means.
Just clarified, I wasn't sure.
Okay. Dawn.
Well, within the budget, if you look at the budget documents, the detail, you watch the meetings, you watch the selectman meetings, it's clear that this money is due diligence money, study money, you know, step-by-step progression. And, you know, I hope I was clear in saying that, you know, it's up to the policy people of the town, as Joe points out, this isn't a done deal. But I think I would be, you know, misleading you if I didn't tell you that what's being discussed is that possibility, but we're a whole long ways from any kind of a recreational facility of any kind, whether it be $1.8 million or any other number. And, you know, another way to look at this is, you know, if you were a property owner and you, and as Joe pointed out, and you had this property, and you, you know, right now, we know it's wooded, we, you know, we know there's some open space there, we don't have any idea or didn't have any idea about the soil conditions, the particular constraints to the property, so, and what impacts, you know, a facility development might have on the roadway and the adjoining roadway. So that's all you're going to get from this. And then there'll be another juncture where you can, where the selectman, the Budget Finance Committee will look at this again, deliberate, and make another decision or not, and then we'll be back to have another debate.
Grace Levitt, 2 Levitt Road. So just a little clarification. Is this $25,000 for a traffic study, or is it also about the wetlands problem? Because now you've said...
It's both things. I've said both things.
Wait, one at a time. Ask your question, and then we're not going to have a dialogue, we're going to ask a question.
Okay, well, is it for both or just the traffic study?
Both.
So I thought I heard somebody say earlier on that you already knew about the wetland situation for this particular property, or at least you already knew some of that information. Do you or don't you?
Okay.
It's an ongoing process. We had some other funding, so those are the two first steps. Those are the two first steps. So we've done the wetlands piece of it. So I guess your question is, the $25,000 being raised, is due diligence money more precisely aimed at the traffic study?
Okay. Then I guess I would be in support of the amendment, because I can tell you right now, without $25,000 traffic study, that's going to impact the traffic on 302, which is already very, very heavy, starting before Memorial Day, right through to Columbus Day. And I'm not sure what other kinds of facilities that could be used for that you may be discussed other than recreational, because it's sounding like people would not find that suitable for recreational, but perhaps you have an answer to that question, what other types of facilities does the town envision it could be used for? Thank you.
Yeah, it was used originally as the town's dump and septic site field, so I would expect at one point it had really heavy traffic, probably heavy on the weekends and heavy in general. So to say that the property couldn't be put to some town use, I think is a stretch. It's, I mean, I don't know if you've visited it, but I don't think you would find it to be an unattractive property. It is upland property. You know, I think it's worth investigating what it can be used for.
Ma'am.
Jessica Fay, Spiller Hill Road. Grace actually asked a question, and I was going to ask, have there been any discussions about other uses besides recreational facility for this property, and or has any other uses been considered?
The only other use that has been in recent time is it was at one point a septic sludge disposal field most recently, which has made for very good and fertile soil conditions, I think. And like the Egypt Road property, absent any specific town use, we have various properties around the community. Typically, they're just open spaces, you know, wooded areas, and so that's not a formal, you know, decision, but if it's not used, that's probably where it ends up. We've just done some timber harvesting there, some forest management, as we've done on, you know, other town parcels. So...
I would urge the Select Board to consider other uses of that property other than just recreational facilities for kids. Just might get more broad support from the community that way. Just a thought.
Ralph Olson, Brook Road. Just a point of clarification, because I think part of the question that you were asking, and maybe I'm misinterpreting, but, you know, where you said some of the, you know, we've already done part of the study and, you know, looking at that funding profile there, I think it's important to recognize what account this is in. It's in the CIP account. So even, you know, and the way the CIP account runs is you do have funds in there that can be used against a number of different things, as long as they are identified in the CIP. So even if, you know, if some of those funds had been expended, you're re-flushing those to keep the CIP account going, to keep all the other things moving as well. So even though we may have already expended some to start some of that study work, we're still just re-flushing that account to keep all the things that are in the CIP still active. And that's part of what the beauty of the CIP does, is it allows you to shift priorities and shift things from time to time in there, so that if something comes up and is a higher priority, it can jump and leapfrog over something else. So I think that may have been somewhere you were looking at there, but, you know, if we continue down the road of doing the study, then we can actually see what value we have up there, and if it's the best use is the recreation facility, so be it. If the best use is something else, so be it. But right now, we have an unknown entity, and what we're looking at is to get, you know, have that money in there so we can get this done, so we can really figure out what we've got, and then put together the whole plan on what can be done up there. So I think if we take that out, we're kind of shortchanging ourselves as far as what we can, what we know and what we don't know.
Sir.
Dennis Morris, 55 Anderson Road. Every year, I come in and elect people in the Budget Committee and the Select Board to look out for my financial interest, with the Budget Committee recommending it and the Select Board recommending it. I speak opposed to the amendment. I think you're looking out for our financial interest, and I thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm opposed to the amendment. I can give a little more background on how this study got into the budget this year. After the failure of the Egypt Road site last year due to salamanders and frogs, we did look for what other opportunities, as Dawn mentioned. This site was brought up, we did a site walk with an engineer last August, but there was nothing we could do until we looked for salamanders and tree frogs again this spring, because that is absolutely step one. But between then and now, we actually talked to landowners adjacent to this property and looked at actually building a new road that would not bring us up through Patricia Avenue. The budget number that Joe spoke of earlier, the $1.8 million, was to build that road and the facility. I felt that, at the time, asking the town for $1.8 million was probably a non-starter, and so I wanted to look further into, would it be possible to come up Patricia Avenue? That's where this study for traffic and what other options would we have came from, and that's why it's in this year's budget. We had monies left over from the Egypt Road project, which is how we got the Vernal Pool study done before this budget item came up, so this would be step two. If the traffic study comes back and says, you're nuts to try to do this on Saturday mornings and evenings off of 302, then maybe what we have to do is know that and go back to the investigation of building that road, getting the costs a little bit firmer down, and coming back to you with that. That might be what happens if the traffic study doesn't come. So the other thing we've looked at also is the possibility of connecting to Wyndham through the new neighborhood that was built there. It's not that far. That would give us another option, so there would be multiple entrances. So there's lots of different things, but until we understand how many cars, what the road situation is, and, you know, would we use a crossing guard, for instance, to stop traffic on 302 during the peak times, we can't answer your questions. And so that's why I asked that this be put in here this year and why we're having this discussion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Crockett, 195 Wadsworth Mills Road. Is there anybody in the Budget Committee, can that $25,000 be reduced and still get a traffic study?
Did you hear the question?
I didn't hear the...
Can the $25,000 be reduced and still have a traffic study?
Originally, that number was higher to do more steps, and it was cut during budget deliberations by the Select Board, down to the 25, to get the traffic study only done, as opposed to some of the other steps.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the proposed amendment to Article 33 to delete the $25,000 line item listed as Patricia Avenue recreational facility. All in favor of the amendment will indicate by raising their voting cards. Those opposed? The amendment fails. We're now voting on Article 33, the main article. Is there any further discussion on Article 33, the main article? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 33. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 33 is adopted. Now, on page 13, we go to Article 34 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $647,964 for the county tax account. The selectmen recommend Article 34, the Budget Committee recommends Article 34. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt Article 34. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Article 34. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 34 is adopted. Article 35. Article 35 on page 14 to see if the town will vote to appropriate the total sum of $1,497,343 from estimated non-property tax revenues to reduce the property tax commitment, together with all categories of funds which may be available from the federal government and any other sources, includes $10,000 from TIF reserve. The selectmen recommend Article 35, the Budget Committee recommends Article 35. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt Article 35. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 35. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 35 is adopted. Article 36 to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept or reject grants, donations, and/or gifts of money to the town of Raymond, and to expend monies donated for specific purposes. The selectmen recommend Article 36, the Budget Committee recommends Article 36. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt Article 36. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 36. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 36 is adopted. Article 37 to see if the town will vote to accept certain state funds as provided by the Maine State Legislature during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and any other funds provided by any other entity included but not limited to: municipal revenue sharing, local road assistance, emergency management assistance, snowmobile registration money, tree growth reimbursement, general assistance reimbursement, veterans exemption reimbursement, state grant or other funds. The selectmen recommend Article 37, the Budget Committee recommends Article 37.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Article 37. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of Article 37. Thank you. Opposed? Article 37 is adopted. Article 38 is an article that is deferred until the second facet of this town meeting. Article 38 to elect one selectman for a three-year term, three members for the Budget Finance Committee for three-year terms, and one member for the RSU School Board of Directors for a three-year term. Before looking for a motion to adjourn, I want to inquire of the clerk as to whether there's any other further business to come before this segment of the town meeting.
Before adjournment, I think you can, um, I don't know, you swore into the seven hundred and fifty...
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn this town meeting until a date certain of 7:00 a.m. on the 9th of June in... a.m. on the 9th of June in this location.
Some move.
A motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded, and I'm sorry, but it is non-debatable.
I raised my hand first.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you give the microphone?
I raised my hand first, I just wanted to make a statement. There are not more than about 60 people here, I don't count everybody, about 60, I'm Marley Turner, 31 Big Pine Road. It's a shame when this is a town of more than 5,000 people, more people aren't here. Many of us may remember that when we had meetings on Saturday, we had tuna fish sandwiches, we had children's programs, we all came, and it was fun, and we were glad to see each other, and it's a wonderful town. I'm proposing we consider Saturday, and I'd be glad to help make programs and tuna fish sandwiches.
The motion before the body is to adjourn this segment of the town meeting until 7:00 a.m. on June 9th to reconvene at this location. It's been moved, seconded, and it is non-debatable. Therefore, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, nay. We are adjourned until June 9th at 7:00 a.m.